The meeting, all rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, Constitution, and our God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. I think we'll start off with our Spotlight School, Maxwell.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share what we've been learning at Maxwell. We have a lot of excited MIS students who are here, ready to share with you what they've learned and what they're curating in their STEM scrapbooks. So we're going to get to that in just a minute. However, I did want to take the opportunity to take you on a little virtual field trip since I can't just take the meeting and move it to Maxwell. I wanted to take the opportunity to show you the results of the construction project that happened this year. So we're going to start with a one-minute video that kind of gives you a glimpse into the STEM world. If you would turn your attention to the big screen over here. Okay, so, since I can't take you there, I thought I'd bring you, bring a video here, just a very short video. As you can see in that video, our students are busy creating and collaborating with their classmates and their teacher. And I do have our STEM teacher, Ms. Stewart, here. Now, I could spend 10 minutes introducing Ms. Stewart. She has so many accomplishments as an educator, but I am not going to do that. I'm just going to give you quick highlights. She is really a model of exemplifying a lifelong learner. She's a NearPod pioneer. She's an Apple teacher. She was instrumental in developing our STEM program at both of the intermediate schools. She presents at the state and national level. Actually, this summer she were going to Denver to present at ISTI. She's a digital learning coach for Keep Indiana Learning. So not only is she impacting our students here in Greenfield, but she's helping those students across the state. So she's going to take just a moment to share with you what, how she's using her learning from iSTEM and her master's program as a STEM, as a STEM licensure program, and how that's impacting our students. And then our students are going to show you their scrapbooks.
When I first started by switching from the junior high and I moved to the intermediate school, our STEM program was non-existent. And we have been fortunate enough for our students to build that up to what it is now. You can see our amazing new space that we have. And then in addition to that, with help of Mr. Cooper, Mrs. Dear, and Mr. Fleming, we have created an award-winning VEX Robotics program. We have also this year started a unified robotics program, and we were award-winning in that. And this is, I'm super proud of this. And so, I'm still, and all of it has been due to the support of GC. I'm so proud to work here because everything we have asked for, for the betterment of our students, anything that we've asked for, we've been able to get because we know that STEM is the future. And we are preparing our students for the future. And to do my part, I have participated in iSTEM program and gotten my STEM licensure for elementary. And I am currently participating in the master's program at Purdue to get my license in STEM educate, get my master's in STEM education there. So I'm going to let the kids take over because they're going to, so, and they're going to show you what we've been doing in our new space this year. So they have some amazing work to show you.
They have put a lot of work and quite a few working lunches with me in practicing to share with you what they've been learning about STEM concepts and some collaboration.
Hi, very welcome. That they use cardboard for the structures, they don't go very fast. Because that's, this is our mind of course, everything that was on there basically that's on here, these are the materials that we had. We had actual, the mainspring, fields and treasures, which that's made spring that makes it move. We winded that. And fields and chives made out of caps. This stage, we made a float for the state parade. Our, mine and my partners was a greenfield monopoly. We had all.
Alright, students, we'll wrap it up in the next 30 seconds. Okay, I know our students have a lot to share with you, but we're kind of short on time. Let's go ahead and wrap it up. Students come around and meet with me over here. Thank you so much, Riley. As you can see, they are very busy and they are working really hard to document their learning too. So I want to thank you again for the opportunity to bring the students, Ms. Stewart, to share our learning with you and to give you a glimpse into our STEM space. And again, I'm going to give Ms. LeClaire full props for this, but she shared with me that it's board appreciation month. So I wanted to share my appreciation for all you guys do, for our GC students, staff, and our family. So thank you for the time.
I'm an old retired teacher. Them being really well explaining themselves was outstanding. So it's more than just annoying and being able to explain it. They were outstanding.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anybody ask us? At this time, I'm going to suspend the regular board meeting and call to order the organizational meeting. First part, let's get an oath in again.
Yes. The statement requires us once again that everybody to take the oath. And I'm prepared, authorized to give that to you. We'll follow along. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Indiana.
And the state of Indiana.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
Faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
As school board member of the Greenfield Central School Corporation.
School board member.
To the best of my skill and abilities, so help me go.
To the best of my skill and abilities, so help me go.
Very much.
Thank you. All right. This time we're going to elect officers. Nothing's really changed. President Dan Brown, Vice President Hillary Close. Second Vice President is John Rem, Secretary Dr. Ween, and Assistant Secretary is Clark Smith. I get a motion to approve the, I lost my chart here. Officers as presented, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the officers as presented.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. I'm thinking of that game tonight. I think. All right, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Day.
Yes, we need to appoint some corporation positions. The first I ask to approve is Mrs. Amy Bishop as corporation treasurer. And we're going to also include Mrs. Amber Forrester as deputy treasurer. And then we have a bid representative panel. And at any time, if we have two of these folks together, we can have a bid opening. It would be myself, Amy Bishop, Chad Gray, Greg Thompson, Brian Skiles, and Dan Strong. I just asked the board to approve those corporation positions.
Yeah, again, again, a motion to approve the school corporation treasurer and bid representatives as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say.
Thank you.
At this time, get, can I get a motion to approve our meetings? Usually have them, oh, no, I'm sorry. Let's approve our salary. Last year, the GC received, we received $2,000 annually and a per diem for $50. And the executive meetings were 25. Can I get a motion to approve the school board's salary as presented?
I move that we establish the compensation for the school board members at the same levels as last year for the 2024 calendar year.
I have a second.
I have a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. All right, at this time, Mr. Strong's been a lawyer in the past. Can we approve Mr. Strong to be our corporation attorney and establish the retainer salary of $3,000?
Make a motion that we appoint Mr. Strong as school corporation attorney and establish the retainer salary at $3,000.
And second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. All right, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Strong for interim conflict of interest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several conflict of interest statements here from Mrs. Close, from Mr. Day, Dr. Owen, from Ms. Claire, and myself. First four people all have family members who work from time to time in the school corporation or coaching the corporation. I have a wife that owns an environmental engineering company that might from time to time do work for the school if a possibility. And I'm also the attorney for the Hancock Water and Sewer Board, so I want to disclose that in this conflict of interest statement. I'd ask the board to adopt those statements and register them with the county clerk and the secretary of state.
Can I get a motion to approve the conflict of interest statements as presented?
I move that we approve the conflict of interest statements as presented.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. Just school board, regular meetings. We usually hold them on the second Monday of the month unless otherwise posted. We begin at 7:00 PM. Location meetings is the Educational Service Center unless otherwise posted. Can I get a motion to approve the meetings?
I move that we approve the meetings as listed.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. At this time, I need a motion for Greenfield Central Community School Corporation bylaws and policies.
I move that we adopt the corporation bylaws and policies.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. At this time, can I get a motion to authorize the board president to make committee appointments during the school year?
Make a motion to authorize the board president to make committee appointments during school years needed.
I get a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. At this time, can I, Mr. Clark, I should ask, will you take over the legislative? At this time, can I get a motion to appoint board legislative liaison, Mr. Clark Smith?
I move that we appoint Mr. Clark Smith as our board's legislative liaison.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. All right, on to Parks Department, Mr. Rem. You had it last year. Will you continue? Can I get a motion to appoint Mr. Rem as our Greenfield Park and Recreation?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. John Rem as the member to the Greenfield Parks Recreation Board.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. This time, I appoint Representative of the City, Greenfield Planning Board, Becky Riley has been.
She's very willing to do that again.
All right, can I get a motion to appoint Becky Riley as Greenfield Planning Board?
Becky Riley as our representative to the city of Greenfield Planning Board.
Can I get a?
I will second.
Can I get a, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say.
I will notify her to let her know.
All right, then again, Jenny Roberts on the Hancock County Public Library.
Also very willing to continue.
Can I get a motion to approve Jenny Roberts as the Hancock County Public Library Board?
Motion to approve Jenny Roberts as our representative of the Hancock County Public Library Board?
Yeah, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then I have one more. John Rem on the RDC. One more time.
I move that we appoint John Rem as the representative to the RDC.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. All right, now on to the disclosed conflict, oh, I'm sorry, Board Finance meeting, Mr. Day.
Yes, each year we are required by Indiana Code to hold a Board of Finance meeting. And there's going to be a couple of things that we look at today. We're going to look at having the Board of Finance organized, and then we will present some reports and policies. It has been past practice of this board to elect the current slate of officers as the slate of officers for the Board of Finance. So I recommend that you follow that again, but that motion is.
Can I get a motion for the Greenfield Central Community School Board and the school trustees convey as the Board of Finance of Greenfield Central Community Schools and elect the board's membership president and secretary, board as officers?
I move that our president, Mr. Brown, and our secretary, Mr. Rem, serve as the president and secretary for the Board of Finance for Greenfield Central Community Schools.
I'll second.
That would be Dr.
I'm the secretary.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Then I, I, I made my motion. So it would be Mr. Brown as president and Dr. Ween as the secretary.
Yes, that's, that sounds better.
I'll second. Can I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say.
Sorry about that. I was trying to get Mr. Rem back in the.
Say you sure.
No, 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 no.
I don't think he wants to do that anymore.
No. Now that we've convened as Board of Finance and elected officers, we are going to go through a couple of reports. The first item is the 2023 investment report. We had a very, very good year. Between total interest and capital gains posted for the calendar year 2023, we earned $956,000 in interest and other earnings. About half of that came from Greenfield Banking Company and our regular checking account and other sweeps of $546,376.22. We earned $153,654.69 in investments from our capital, or from our investment fund. And within that investment fund, we did invest in some treasuries this year, and those technically show up as capital gains that we post them as interest. And the gain on that was $256,241.61. This is much higher than it's been the last few years. Coming out of the pandemic, interest rates are recovering nicely. That's really been a great addition to our bottom line. As we talk about our investment account, as we've talked in the past, we don't have a lot of flexibility in those investment vehicles. They're primarily CDs and treasuries, government treasuries. They want us to be investing in no risk or low-risk options to the school corporation, which is great because we will not lose money on our investments. But in past years, you've seen we don't earn a ton of money on our investments either. Just so you know, I have detailed out the investments in our investment funds. These are all CDs on this page. And we have approximately $6.7 million invested out between now and the last maturity in October of 2025. I'm also, also included in here is the board policy F200 that has the, authorizes the investment of those funds and the use of certain allowable instruments. I ask that the Board of Finance review the investment policy and approve the investment report as presented.
Be comments or questions, Mr. Day? If not, can I get a motion that the Board of Finance of Greenfield Central Community Schools review the investments income policies and approve the investment report as presented?
I move that we approve the investment report as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say.
Thank you. Another requirement of Indiana Code is that we present the fiscal indicators report as published by the distressed units appeal board, also known as DUAP. This is a slightly dated report because it goes through the end of 2022. It's very similar to the report that you've seen in years past. Generally, our balances have stayed steady over the last five years. We've seen some ups and downs in a couple of places, but overall our total investments are, or sorry, our total cash balances are relatively the same. We are waiting on some reimbursements for federal funds, particularly revolving around ESER. And you can see as we've, in this report, we've been spending down construction funds that we've been using to improve some of our facilities over the last couple of years. I'd just like to point out that ADM continues to be a concern. We are, we are down from our high point a few years ago. And that's just something that we ought to be looking at as we move forward. The Board of Finance has just reviewed this report, and there's no action needed. The last item that we have on the Board of Finance is we need to designate one or more financial institutions to be the depository for our corporation funds. We currently use two banks, Greenfield Banking Company as a depository of corporation funds and Huntington Bank as a depository for our corporation investment fund. I ask that the Board of Finance approve and designate those two same institutions for this coming year.
Can I get a motion that the Board of Finance of Greenfield Central Community Schools designate Greenfield Banking Company as a depository and the corporation funds of Huntington Bank as a depository of the corporation investment funds?
Make a motion that we designate Greenfield Banking Company as depository of corporation funds and Huntington Bank as depository for the corporation investment fund.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say.
That closes the Board of Finance meeting, and we can return to the regular.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting, yes.
All right, we'll move on to routine matters. Can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting December 11th, 2023, and the executive session of December 11th, 2023?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from the regular and executive sessions of December 11th.
Can I second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. On to claims, Mr. Day.
Yes, in your packet for this month are the regular accounts payroll claims, the payroll claims, and the next construction claim on the auditorium project. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about these claims. Otherwise, I ask the board to approve the claim docket as presented.
I just want to thank you for giving our number random.
Yes, yes.
Appreciate that.
Still kind of lumps a few together under generic items, but we can continue to finance that as we move forward.
All right, thanks.
Much easier to follow.
Yes, so we also, if you notice, we also got it ordered in voucher number.
Much better than alphabetical.
Right, yes. Alphabetical by random type of check, yeah.
Exactly.
The new system, the new code control system is very, very nice. It's allowed us to do reports much quicker and things like that. It's just every once in a while, we kind of run into having to learn how to navigate some of the new items.
Right. Move on. Can I get a motion to approve the claims as presented?
Make a motion to approve the claims as presented?
I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. On to old and unfinished business, financial matters, Mr. Day.
Yeah, I'm going to have two items under financial matters this evening. The first is our normal budget report, and this is a wrap-up of 2023 in both the education fund and the operations fund. Also included in this report are a summary of the end-of-year transfers, and finally, a cash balance, revenue, and expenditure comparison for the years of 2019 through 2023. Just to let you know, we have received our 2024 1782 notice from the DLGF. This will lead to a budget order later this month. It is within the parameters we advertised, and we will set that up, or will communicate that that is okay with us to the DLGF here this week. We continue to be in great shape on all of our cash balances. As we've talked about prior to this, our operations fund will continue to be healthy, is down from past years. We're going to move out of a period where we've been doing a lot of bigger projects out of the operations fund and really into a maintenance and, and repair situation there. One of the items that we talked about a little bit last month, but is continuing to be on the top of our agenda in that fund, is trying to be more efficient. And so we're going to continue to look at our alternative energy and shaving off some of our electrical demand. It's where we spend a lot of money, and that fund is for utilities. Again, overall, we should be, we are comfortable with our financial situation, both from this snapshot and what we talked about in the DUAP fiscal indicators report. In the long-term cash balance comparison, you can see that an education fund that we have, we've accomplished a lot of our goals, which is drive dollars to the classroom, retain our, our high-quality staff that we have, attract more staff. Our certified staff salaries have gone up, while at the same time, we have been able to maintain a very healthy cash balance. I feel like we are in a very, very good place financially, and so allowing us to accomplish a lot of our goals moving forward. Happy to answer any questions you have.
If you have any questions, we'll go on to the farm lease.
Yes, so on January 3rd, we opened up the lease for the Maxwell Farm bid. We had four bidders, and all four conformed to the bid requirements. This is a four-year term as opposed to our normal five-year term, which brings us back aligned with our other pieces. So we're asking that the board approve entering a lease with Crossroad Family Farms and allow Dr. Owen to execute the contract.
If no questions, comments, can I get a motion to approve the farm lease as presented and allow Dr. Owen to execute the contracts?
I move that we approve the farmland lease as presented and allow Dr. Owen to execute the contracts.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. Thank you, Mr. Day.
Thank you.
On to instructional report.
I only have one item for you this month, and this is actually the early literacy achievement grant. This kind of came as a little bit of a surprise to us that the state had set aside $10 million specifically for early literacy achievement. I would tell you, it's a little bit of a misnomer in the way that it was. I would tell you it's a little bit of a misnomer in the way that it was, uh, awarded early was not based on achievement. It was really more based on growth that a school corporation would have received. For instance, uh, corporations that have already been at ninety percent on their I read scores but didn't show much growth receive significantly less dollars than a, a corporation that would have been at fifty percent and grew to seventy percent passing rate. That being said, um, obviously, we're never going to turn down dollars that come our, our direction. It does, uh, have a very limited number of teachers that this applies to the way that it was written. As you can see with, uh, the qualifying categories there, this would be really, uh, preschool through third grade teachers that are responsible for the teaching of reading. So you have that in front of you there, uh, just a little summary there, and then that's followed by uh, a policy that we would recommend, which is required of us to, to formally have a policy similar to what the T A D grant is. And you're seeing the language that we would recommend. We're happy to take any questions that you would have about that. It is something we would need to pay out here within sixty business days.
Yeah, if questions, comments, production. If, if not, can I get a motion to approve the early literacy achievement grant as presented?
I, so moved.
Second.
Second, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying.
Thank you, get distributed.
Construction project update.
Something a little bit different this month in terms of, of providing a little new technology for it. I think, um, Mr. Thompson's going to pull it up for you, show you a few things. We've given you snapshots in the past of how things are progressing really in the auditorium box and those hallways. Obviously, we've showed you the, the upgrades we have to the, uh, swimming pool seating. This would be, uh, taking a look from the, the current stage area, working back. You know, we've made that reference to the waterfall seating quite a bit. That shows you really on both the left and the right there, uh, the seating that will take place connecting the balcony to that, that main level. Quite a bit of excavation that still needs to happen there, thus the equipment. We've, uh, referenced that in past construction reports because there's a lot of underground, uh, duct work that still needs to, to be in, put in place. But a lot of the, the structural pieces, uh, the pillars that hold up those, uh, structural steel, those are, are now in place. But they put a drone in there and which allows us to show you from multiple vantage points what it's going to look like. One of the advantages of, of this particular seating with, with, uh, the waterfall, it really brings that balcony very close to the stage, and obviously, the stage comes out from the, what's that term? Starts with P?
Proscenium.
There you go, comes forward from that. So the audience will be very close to the stage, uh, creating a very intimate atmosphere for, for ten hundred-plus people in the audience.
And as we stand right here, what's not installed, but actually has been installed since this drone picture was taken, is another, uh, set of seats that go in front of that beam there at the bottom of the, of the picture. So that balcony actually extends out another ten feet from where we are standing today.
So I think it shows you that progress continues to be made. This was effectively about probably a week and a half. Yeah, so a little over a week ago. It continues to, to take shape.
Good deal.
Can you show the hallway? You know, I asked you from the, the stage and from the balcony.
The back area or the side?
The side one, the one between the gym and the auditorium.
I don't think they flew a drone in there yet.
All right, well.
Yeah, I think earlier we had.
I don't want to make you sick. As we continue to get updates, we will share with you. Obviously, if you would like to walk the facility, we can make that happen after four o'clock as the construction crews wrap up their days, we can get you out there. We'd encourage you to bring a pair of boots, but, uh, it's pretty interesting to, to see it. We'd be happy to show it to you.
Well, thank you for the updates.
It is heated, yes, so it's got to be a little.
It is, no, but you will have noticed they did put up some, um, plastic to kind of hold some of that heat in there. On that north end, they won't close that up until they're done with that excavator work. Once that's done, they'll close it up, they'll put more heat in there.
The, uh, the, the balcony, or not the balcony, the, um, lobby area, the support spaces along the west side, that long hallway, is actually fairly comfortable. It's, it's probably in the, you know, mid to high fifties. To warm our on the second floor, heat rises. The other thing that they did work on is we're going to have, it's temporary heat currently, but we should have some permanent heat here relatively soon. They ran the hot water piping along the back of the, um, high school gym up in the rafters over Christmas break. We're in the, uh, theater backstage, uh, work space now, the workshop in this, in this view.
Okay, thank you. Beyond the auditorium project, we just put a reminder there, uh, the general obligation bond, we can do some things on the L E D lighting, upgrading some of the security cameras and, uh, a couple of our facilities, including this one, which we did not put on there, uh, that this building would be covered now as well. So happy to take any questions you have about any construction that we have going on at this time.
All right, thank you. On to, uh, new business.
Oh.
Business information.
Yep, I have two items under here. The first is a quick grant donation. J B Stevens Elementary received two hundred and fifty dollars from the Greenfield Central School Foundation to be used towards their kindness Coopers Project. I ask that the school board approves this grant donation as presented.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the donation grants as presented?
I move that we approve the donation, um, from the school foundation to J B Stevens.
Second, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying.
Thank you. The second item, um, is to set a full-time S R O hourly rate. Um, as we discussed over the last couple of years, we're trying to bring some more S R Os on full-time. And we fortunately have two who are joining us on February first, Rick Wiltshire and Ron Chinum, and their, you know, information is can, is, uh, also in this report. We are proposing a forty-dollar per hour rate for full-time S R Os. I ask that the school board approve that hourly rate for full-time S R Os as presented.
Uh, no questions, comments, can I get a motion to approve the hourly rate for the full-time S R Os?
I move that we approve the hourly rate as presented.
Second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying. Thank you, Mr. Day.
Thank you.
Out of state field trips.
It is that time of year where you see some things coming from our, um, winter guard. We have a request from Mr. Ween to, to World Guard International both winter and spring and Northern Kentucky, at Northern Kentucky University, April eighteenth through twenty-first, and then the open guard trip in February, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, where they would be in the W G I regional competition. Uh, also, same group, March twenty-third, twenty-fourth in Cincinnati, and then potentially, uh, Dayton, Ohio on April tenth. These groups do this year in, year out, understand the expectations we have for out-of-state overnight field trips. No cost incurred to the corporation, I would recommend approval.
Sorry, can I get a motion to approve the overnight field trips as presented?
Make a motion to approve these overnight field trips as presented?
Second.
All the favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Sorry about that. All right, school calendar, first reading.
It is that time of year where we start thinking ahead to the, the school calendar for that, that next year. This will be for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. If you remember last year, we did very comprehensive, uh, surveying of our staff and community and really came back that, obviously, a lot of opinions about the, the balanced calendar we've been in for well over a decade. We did ask people last year who asked us to consider a few adjustments to that, but a majority of the people last year wanting that. What I've put before you would be a calendar very similar to what you would have approved eleven months ago. It continues that balanced calendar, uh, trying to, to really stay out of, uh, July and, and June as much as possible, uh, while maintaining balance in the, the semesters and quarters, maintaining the seasonal two-week breaks and then the federal holidays we're accustomed to participating in. So you're seeing a calendar that is, would match up fairly well with our peers in this, this county as well as the Walker Career Center with a few exceptions that I've mentioned, not only, uh, in years past, but again, this year. If the board would like to see any changes to that, I certainly welcome any inputs you might have before we would put that out before our classroom teachers association and community.
Questions, comments? All right, personal matters, contract recommendations, resignations and lease retirements.
Certified recommendations for Sierra Stout and Carrie Butler, certified resignation for Amanda Rush, N E C A resignation for Fred Bays, David Connor, Mike A. Garricki, and Kristen Jones. I would ask that the board approve, uh, that portion of the personnel report as presented. That's right.
I'm just going to have Hillary take it over.
If no questions, so I would ask that you approve that portion that I've, that I've highlighted there and allow us to have permission to move forward with hiring as needed.
Are there any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the personnel report as presented and authorize hiring as needed?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented, uh, also permission to hire as needed for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I'll second.
All the favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That portion carries, I don't think we have, do we have Sierra or Carrie, either one here as seen? We do, oh, Mr. Curtis.
Uh, I'd like to introduce you to Sierra Stout, she will be teaching fifth grade E L A. And Carrie Butler, she'll be teaching sixth grade E L A.
Welcome.
Welcome.
T C. Before we leave the personnel report, there is one other item. There is a certified dismissal for Amy Beasley, choir teacher at Junior High School. I ask that the board, uh, terminate that contract immediately.
Yeah, can I get a motion to, uh, terminate the contract with Amy Beasley? Second?
Second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying.
So I have the personnel report.
Get contract recommendations. Nothing further, uh, we'll move along to important dates. Monday, the fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, Martha Luther King, the, uh, regular school board meeting, Monday, the twelfth, twenty twenty-four. No school on February nineteenth, Presidents' Day. And if we don't have anything else, I'm going to ask the board to adjourn the, the meeting.
I move that we adjourn.
Second, second, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying. All right, have a good evening. Sorry about the hiccup there.